Excellent. All right, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to Order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't have any announcements this evening. Is there anyone here for anything that is not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing as none, I will move right into our first agenda item, which is a public hearing for the Oktoberfest Committee for a one-day liquor license for 10-7, 2023, and possible votes.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I get a roll call vote?
Postman, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye?
Smith, aye.
Okay. Come on up. Mr. St. Pierre. Questions? Questions? I have so many. So, the annual Oktoberfest Beer Garden, usual stuff. You got your serve safe and everything else is all taken care of. Same spot as last time by the jeng store. No issues with public safety. They have no questions, concerns?
Nope.
No, the chief signed it.
And the chief signed it. Do any of the selectmen have any questions for the chairman of the Oktoberfest Committee? Seeing as none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Postman, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye?
Smith, aye.
Okay, and then I will entertain a motion on the license itself.
Make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Oktoberfest Beer Garden behind the jeng store.
What the date meant?
October 7th, 2023, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
See how easy that is? All right, so Lisa, do I have to wait till 7:10 for the next one? Because it's posted?
Yeah.
All right. So we will jump around. We'll go to agenda, agenda item number three, Douglas Orchard Farm Sign Review and Possible Votes. We have the Socrates. How are you? All right. Oh, is that the proposal?
Yeah, it's in your packet.
I know, but you had it up. It was like quicker for me to look over at yours.
I didn't like you breathing down my neck.
Yes, you did. Stop it. So this is what you're, so it's like a whiteboard that you're gonna?
No, it'll be a wooden board.
Wooden board.
And so the same as the others, it's gonna be made of pine. We finished exactly the same, same dimension, interchangeable. Sometimes of the season, we'll only have the main one, most of the season. Sometimes we'll have the blueberry, sometimes we'll have the apple. And then this one will just be for those 13 or 14, 15 events for the three days.
All right.
And, don't get me wrong, I didn't have Photoshop. So I actually took the photo of the other blueberry one, laid over the piece of paper, and we're actually gonna use like a, what's it called, like a cricket? That's a better color one.
Yeah, like the cricket will write the letters real nice, and then they're vinyls.
They're not gonna be handwritten, they'll be printed.
Yeah.
On a board.
And then you can take the, like, the live concert off and put on Halloween Festival.
Yeah, that was a great thought. I appreciate it. The leadership.
And then the, yeah, and then the date.
Just need a little time to digest it.
Make the architect work.
I like it, because I think it actually brought this point.
It does, it complements it nicely.
Thank you.
It's in a good compromise, should keep everybody happy.
Yeah, and you saw my last words, guaranteed no flippy signs, so I'm all set.
Yeah.
And then the other point was just of, because we are definitely all year round and have been for about five years, that we want to amend, and it's on the letter, to be able to leave the sign up. And we will refinish it, usually in winter, we'll refinish the top part every year.
Sure.
We'll try to stay ahead of it, instead of losing it this time. And, and on this, I'm hoping, and it won't be for this year, that we can do possibly the one downtown as well, the same format for this. I didn't say particularly both, but...
Do you advertise a concert downtown?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking.
We always have the flippy up there, too, and I'm not gonna do it this year, because this takes time to do this. And we have our next event, it's October 21st, which is the Halloween Fall Festival. We've done for five years. Which, Patrick?
And you typically only put that up for a few days anyways, correct?
Three days.
Three days.
These are only three-day events. I mean, it's a one-day event on a Saturday.
Yep.
Goes up on a Thursday morning, and when I go home on Saturday night, I usually remember to go, and that's why I have to backtrack, I take them out. And that sign should last forever, because it only goes up 14, 15 times a year for three days.
Right.
So that's it, and so if we can have it be all year round, because we are all year round, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't have anything else to add?
No, I have no issues with it. I like the idea. I think it looks a lot better.
So you're ready for a motion?
I'm always ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend his, I guess, described as a permit to have his signs up at the end of Depot Street and at the corner of Southeast Main Street. Instead of taking it down in November, just leave it up year-round. And to approve his, the hanging signs underneath, where during the concert periods, he's gonna have 13 or 14 weeks, that has the secondary hanging sign underneath. Typically, it's only gonna be one hanging underneath.
Yep.
That's it. I ran out of things to talk about, so I stopped.
I want somebody to mark this on the calendar. It's the day that Mike ran out of stuff to talk about.
No, I still have you.
So, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thanks for taking the time to think about what we talked about.
Concentrating on apple picking and just doing the good things that we do. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Looks much better, too, Aaron.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else in here that we can go through quick in like three minutes?
Six?
Six.
Yeah, why don't we do the, oh, six? What's six? Oh, the snowplow rates, yeah.
Sure.
No, he's gonna, um, department update as well.
All right, Adam, come on up, my friend.
Good evening.
Evening.
I know it's not on your agenda, but is any objection to me talking about building maintenance at the same time, since it's, I don't know if it's all right or not?
It's okay.
Okay, all right. So I'll start with building maintenance, just because it's the first thing that's on my list right here. And I'm gonna repeat some stuff that I know the older selectmen on the board have been here a while, but the newer ones probably don't know, so you'll hear some stuff that you've heard many times over. In 2013, the town was in a very difficult financial position than we are today. Back then, the former town administrator asked me to take on the maintenance manager's position along with my duties at the highway department. For the past 10 years, I have been pulling double duty as the highway worker slash foreman and the town's maintenance manager, along with other various positions throughout town. As you know, as of July 1st, I became the acting highway superintendent. The maintenance manager's position is a very important position that requires a lot of time, dedication, attention to detail, and supervision of contractors. I know some discussion was had about making this a full-time position again, and I feel it's time for this to happen. When the previous maintenance manager was in place, he had to mow, string trim, perform custodial duties, shovel and salt all walkways at the municipal center, library, and adult social center, along with daily repairs slash concerns from each department and election and event setups. The highway department mows and string trims the town buildings now. The town hires a custodial company to clean and to disinfect the buildings, and the highway department hires the snowplow contractor to shovel all the walkways at the municipal center, library, and adult social center. Having a full-time maintenance manager again will help greatly with the daily issues from the departments that arise along with the much-needed record-keeping and documentation that must be completed. Over the years, doing both positions, I have had to rely on Matt, Lisa, Gene, and Mike to help with concerns, projects, documents, and oversight of contractors while I work at the highway department. I feel this full-time position will make maintenance a priority and eventually reduce costs at all town-owned buildings and departments. That's that, just some updates on projects. Post office adult social center paving has gone out for bids. We'll be opening bids on October 11th at noon. The completion date is November 22nd this year, so it's a tight timeframe, but they say they can do it, we're hoping. The municipal roof and elevator roof projects are projected to be more costly than anticipated due to some repairs that will need to be addressed during the roof replacement and the cost increases in materials since the original quote. We will be asking for additional funds at the fall town meeting. Municipal key system project has been awarded and will start in the next two weeks. This will replace the current key system at the municipal center and add more security to our offices and buildings. This should be completed in less than a month. And just some items for discussion, not right now, but for you guys, you know, the demo of 19 Main Street, if anyone's noticed, the hole's getting bigger. On the building, on that building, you know, and I always have vacant buildings, you know, the VFW building, 19 Main Street, the old fire station, Carter Street, Old Grammar School, you know, how many of you guys know, they're all there, and just on the radar, that's all I wanna tell you.
Okay.
Okay, now we'll go to highway department, unless you have any questions. I'm trying to go through this, I know you have a big agenda.
That's all right.
That's good.
So, again, going back to some old information, highway employees, 2010 versus today. 2010, we had one superintendent, one mechanic slash foreman, one group leader, five full-time laborers, one administrative assistant, three part-time winter employees, and four part-time summer employees. As of today, we have one superintendent, well, acting is myself, one group leader who's on medical leave and unknown or on return, three and a half full-time laborers, the half is because we have the maintenance job, and so myself or someone else takes on half of that responsibility, one administrative assistant, one part-time employee year-round, about one day a week at most, and one part-time employee in the winter. In the last four, well, with John's move, and then Dave who retired last year, and the person on medical leave, and another one who's told me that he's gonna leave December 31st, I'm gonna lose 109 years of experience in the department, all right, between the four of them. Right now, it's, the next one is me at 17 years, and then eight, two, and one, that's the highway department. So, we're losing a lot, lot of knowledge, lot of experience. Every town and city is finding a lack of workers joining the DPW field, and it ends up being a bidding war when we try to hire and keep good workers. Our strategy that has worked with the last two employees to hire is hiring inexperienced workers and train them. This takes time and many hours of training, but it's been successful for us so far. We get the younger, you know, the younger guys, we train them, they've stayed, knock on wood, I hope they continue to stay, they're making progress every day. Added work since 2010, we mow all the ball fields. The caretaker was cut in 2011, that used to mow all the ball fields, so the highway department does it. We mow all the town buildings. We do town building maintenance since 2013. We now have stormwater management regulations that we have to maintain, and we do OSHA and DLS regulations and training all the time. So, again, we had cuts in 2010, 2011, one full-time employee, four summer positions. Current issues, stormwater. With the significant rainfall this year, we continue to have many complaints from residents about flooding and road water runoff. Unfortunately, most of these residents built or purchased a home downgrade from other properties or roadway. With the increased rainfall, stormwater management should be considered on every house lot during design construction phase. Lawn mowing, this year we've had the need to mow all the ball fields, commons, and town buildings every five days. It takes two workers, four days to mow everything, all the stuff, and we've just been doing it nonstop. And our machines, we have a 1996 and a 2005, and we constantly have one of them broke down at all times. So we're down to one lawnmower, right now we're down to one lawnmower, and we're trying to fix it ourselves. Brush cutting, this year we have three weeks reserved with the brush cutting, you see them around town. With the overgrowth, it's so heavy, we will only get a third of the town done. The cost for the three weeks is $15,925. We've approached the capital committee for a brush cutter for our sidewalk tractor, and we'll be discussing that coming up. The brush cutter for the sidewalk tractor will cost $42,000, and we will, that will let us cut brush all spring, summer, and fall. So we'll be able to dedicate someone hopefully to that, you know, most of the year. Anything that's not done by the brush cutter this year will have to be done by hand with string trimmers, because that's what we have. So that's how that works. Vehicle and repairs and maintenance, so far this year, we've had a bad streak of equipment breaking down. We've already spent $15,000 or $50,000 maintenance budget just on repairs, just in the last two months. So we have one truck in the shop right now and another one going behind it that's having an air leak. So, updates on projects, South Street Drainage and Paving. AF, Amarillo and Sons have been awarded the contract for the project. Bid price was $989,563.40. Weather depending, they feel they can accomplish the drainage and paving by November 22nd on South Street. So that's gonna be from Thomas Circle to Hemlock Street. It's gonna be drainage and paving. Crack sealing company is scheduled for October 4th through 6th. We'll be crack sealing Old Carriage Lane, Kelly Circle, Perry Street, Royal Crest Drive, Chestnut Street, Conservation Drive, Jefferson Drive, Darling Way, Berendy Wine Circle, Essex Street, and the total estimated cost was $35,000. Next, I have two workers dedicated for the week before Oktoberfest, just for Oktoberfest setup. It takes two of my guys all week to get everything set up, forward signboards, and we've already started putting stuff together, and then we have three workers at the event at all times. And on, for the capital, we have the sidewalk tractor is on order and should be delivered by January 2024, and a six-wheel international truck is on order and should be delivered by November 2024. They're a year out, from, over a year out. So that's highway selectmen, and I got tree warding now. I'll go to this one, next. Okay. Only one more, then we're on the plow rates. So, so far since July 1st, we removed 34 trees in the town of Douglas, between us and National Grid. We have 127 trees on our list right now. 95 of them are just on Webster Street alone, and we have a big right-of-way there, and we have a lot of dead and dying trees. So we started off this fiscal year with $10,000, and I'll be requesting additional $50,000 at the fall town meeting for removal of dead and dying trees. The cost per day for the current contract is $1,750. And again, depending on the size of the tree, it could be one large tree for the day, or 10 small trees in a day. Just depends on the size. And we like to keep a $5,000 for emergency work, you know, in the budget at all times. Okay, now we are on to winter. Winter stuff. Last year, we had 18 subcontractors. We had three of them retire, they're, all three of those were retired guys already, they retired from their full-time job, they just plowed for us in the wintertime, and they all stated the same thing, truck costs are too much, repair costs are too much right now. So they, all three of them just said it's not worth it for me to plow, and I understand that. I've asked Matt to replace the three, they're retired, plus add an additional two. One to cover the highway worker who's on medical leave, and one to cover the worker, I have a part-time worker who now took a full-time job at the fire department, who will be with me once in a while, but not all the time, so I need to replace him as well. That will put us at 20 subcontractors and six highway workers for the winter. Sanding, we will have five highway trucks and one subcontractor with six-yard sander, and one subcontractor with a three-yard sander. We'll advertise for the subcontractor positions after Oktoberfest, because we have our signboard tied up with them right now. If the potential housing developments go through, then the subcontractor and highway worker numbers will need to go up, we'll need to figure that out as these developments keep coming. I keep seeing it on-site plan review, these house, housing projects that are coming through and are discussed anyway, so. Sidewalk plowing is, in the past, once we get things completed on the streets, we will then address the sidewalks and intersections throughout town. Some people want it done right away, but it takes us the next day to get to that stuff. Salt bids, the state bid came in at $68 a ton, which we're not on, we actually are on the Nantown-Shoesbury bid, and 70% of that came in at 65.69, and 30% comes in at 65.86, which is $6.13 less on the first bid from last year, and $20.04 less from the second bid last year. So we're doing financially well in that area. The plow rates, which is what the next agenda, that I think you have to vote on. Last year, the current plow rates are three-quarter ton. A minimum eight-foot plow was 87 an hour. The one ton with a minimum nine-foot plow was 103 an hour. The skid steer was 87 an hour. The backhoe with a 12-foot pusher was 120 an hour. The six-wheel dump truck with 10-foot plow and six-yard sander was 152 an hour. The proposed new rates, three-quarter ton with an eight-foot plow was $90 an hour. One ton with a minimum nine-foot plow is 103 an hour. One ton with a minimum nine-foot plow and three-yard sander is 120 an hour. The skid steer is $90 an hour. The backhoe with a 12-foot pusher is 123 an hour. The six-wheel dump with 10-foot plow and six-yard sander is 158 an hour. Again, these are matching the state rates. The one tons, if you notice, did not go up from the state, they kept them the same from last year to this year. I don't know why, they, everything else went up, but the one tons, they kept the same. And we try to keep with the state rates, so it's averaged about $3 to $6 for our guys.
And we need to be competitive with the state to get contractors.
Correct. Exactly. Especially, like I said, right now with the retired guys leaving, and all I have is the subcontractors, most of them own their own business and have the insurance year-round, where these other guys have to buy it. Last year, they didn't make a lot, because it was an easier winter than most.
And it makes sense for the plow drivers, because towns usually, towns always pay faster than the state does, so.
Correct, and we have a really good group of guys, and I don't wanna lose them either. And that's my whole thing.
Cool. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Fernando? So, and we need to vote on the plow rates, right?
Correct. Make a motion to approve the proposed plow rates as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to item number two. So, sorry we ran over, but it's okay. We have a public hearing for the Grill on Main, one-day liquor license and one-day entertainment license for 10-7-23, impossible votes. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote?
Postman, aye.
Fitzpatrick. What's that?
We gotta open the hearing first. Jeri?
Is it clear to go?
Yeah.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Smith, aye.
Excellent. I'm gonna bring the applicants up first, and then once they've said their piece, and I open it up for conversation from the floor. Okay? Hi. How are you, ladies?
Good, how are you all?
Excellent. We have everything in their packet they need?
Yeah, yep.
Excellent. Public safety chiefs are all good with it?
Signed off, yes.
Signed this one as well, the chief.
Collector did as well, they're all up to date on that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of the applicants?
Again, this would be for a liquor and one-day entertainment.
And one-day.
Yeah.
And we just wanna let it be known that I know that there's like music out there and everything, but whatever times those are happening, we will not, we'll ask the one guy to not play the music during that time.
Okay. So what were you planning on, is it live music on your side, too?
Yeah, it's just like a guy with an acoustic guitar, that's it.
All right.
Yeah. And it would be like down below in the parking lot.
So it'd be more where they'd hear it, where, I'm assuming you said you have a tent?
Yes.
So, beer and wine, or hard alcohol?
No, hard, just beer and wine.
They're only allowed to do.
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine, they have a roped-off area.
All right. I don't have any questions. Does anyone on the board have any questions of the folks from the Grill on Main? Seeing as none. Did you have some commentary, Mr. St. Pierre?
Tony St. Pierre, chairman of Douglas Oktoberfest. The day that they've selected to do this event is Oktoberfest Day. So that tells me that they wanna, that they wanna participate in the Oktoberfest event, take advantage of the thousands of people that Oktoberfest brings to the event. This is the first time the committee has heard of this request. They didn't tell it to us, they didn't ask us if they could be a vendor. And it's problematic for us in a couple ways, in that we can't control how much alcohol is consumed at our event if there's more than one vendor, okay?
We'd be happy to provide parts, sorry.
Just hold on, just hold on.
We had similar problems with the same group. They signed up as a vendor last year, and they were selling food and drinks. Now, drinks was pretty ambiguous on the form, but we allowed that. Then we found out the drinks that they were sold were alcoholic, okay? And they were selling drinks to-go with a straw, and people were walking around the street drinking alcoholic drinks, which isn't allowed, okay? Then, after we questioned that, then what they did was, they sold drinks to-go and told them to go sit in our beer garden to do it, okay? So now I have drinks from Grill on Main, alcoholic drinks that are not beer and wine, in the Oktoberfest Beer Garden being consumed. It's problematic, because I have bartenders, tip-certified bartenders, that are supposed to be controlling how much alcohol is consumed, and we got alcohol that's showing up in our beer garden that wasn't sold by us, okay?
Well, it's an understandable concern, on the drinks to-go, Lisa, keep me honest on this one. So the Commonwealth allows that drinks-to-go service, as long as food was served first, right?
As long as they're doing takeout, food takeout, they can do alcohol-to-go, and it's valid en masse until March 30th, 2024.
Okay. So it'd be no different, like, if they went into Gregory's and bought a slice of pizza and, let's say, a beer, if Gregory's had a beer license?
Yeah, I mean...
So there's not much anybody can really do to regulate that, as the state says it's allowed per?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess the final concern is, is that, you know, for the last 25, 30 years that I've been doing this, we built this event to be pretty successful, okay? And occasionally, what happens is, is we have a group that wants to be involved in that, but they don't wanna contribute anything. They don't, they don't wanna, they don't wanna talk to us, they don't wanna work with us to, you know, create, you know, cohesive event. They just wanna, you know, they just wanna sell to the crowd that we bring up.
Well, understood, and I mean, it's a double-edged sword, also, Tony, I mean, you gotta keep in mind, we're shutting down Main Street, you know, for the course of the day. Their businesses are located on Main Street, so in a way, they could argue back, saying by having the event, it could potentially impair their business. And we've had these back and forths on location and locale and things like that. It does, but I mean, it's still, it's one way or another, like, not everybody's going to be happy. So, they have a business license in town, they can operate their business during Oktoberfest separate from the committee if they so choose to, they're licensed to do so. If they wish to come to the town and apply for a one-day liquor permit and a special event permit, and it happens to be on the same down, same day as Oktoberfest, I don't feel it would be fair of our board to say, no, I'm sorry, you can't do it, because of an event that's going on, considering this is impacting their business and a chance for them to recover or earn additional revenue. Well, it would be preferred that you guys try and become part of the Oktoberfest. If they opt not to, I can't force them to.
I believe last year we did get a tent and we're not opposed to getting one to support the town this year. Just normally somebody has come around and asked us, but, and we've been extremely busy. We actually have another business that we're doing right now as well, so we haven't had time to really.
Nobody stopped any either.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And the whole thing is just because our customers are coming to us saying like, we have this big parking lot that doesn't get used, why not have something outside? And with us being a small place, nine out of 10 times is like we do get a huge crowd that comes in for food. So we do like a limited menu as it is, so to reduce the crowd like inside, to have people that are just coming there to have a drink, that way the people that are eating can stay inside and do like smaller stuff. We talked about like just chili, like we did last year, just outside in a tent instead of having it right there, just using our, utilizing our parking lot. If we wanted to do that through Oktoberfest last year, we were going to have to pay like hundreds of dollars just to say because we wanted to use our own parking lot, you know? And then we found out, well, why are we paying extra money when we already are licensed? Because from previous years, we've had to pay for licenses on Oktoberfest Day when we already have them.
Or we've helped out like with the classic cars, allowing them to park for free.
Which last year, the weather, unfortunately, they didn't end up doing it, but we were going to, you know, use, doing our parking lot to do that too.
I have a question for them. Are you going to be offering drinks to go this year?
Um, so, so like she said, if they order food?
I'm asking you that.
Oh.
I heard what she said.
Oh.
It's just a real simple yes or no.
Yes, yes.
You are. So the chairman of the committee brings up a valid concern because there's no way to control it. You can't control it, he can't control it, nobody can control somebody walking around. Once they walk out of there, there's an event going on, so people aren't coming down just to get your food and get your, your drink to go and then go home, they're going to walk around the event.
Right.
It's just logic, so, um, that would be my, my concern. If you had, if you did it like what you say here and you have controlled areas similar to what they're having at their beer garden, I personally don't have any concern about that. But I do, I can sympathize with what he was saying and it makes logical sense that if you give drinks to go, you have no control of, nobody does.
Okay.
It creates a problem. So I don't see how you can have both. If you're allowed by state to do it, there's, there's not much that we can do about it. But if you're asking for this, I think there should be some sort of compromise on that. If you want to have this on your own property where your business is being impacted during that, across of that day, you need to control whoever you're serving alcohol to.
Yeah, we're okay with us.
It's just a good thing to do, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Does that alleviate some of your concerns, Tony? Like if they're not doing the drink-to-go service, saying basically it's just like another tent?
One minute.
It still becomes a problem with me though because I can't, I still can't, when, when people come to this event during the day for Oktoberfest, they can, they come to my beer garden or they go to, you know, to their, they came to Oktoberfest though.
Mm-hmm.
They didn't, they didn't come to their event, they came to the Oktoberfest with 14,000 other people. Okay? So, so what happened is, is that if something happens liability-wise, they're not signed up as a vendor from us. They didn't, they didn't apply to us to be a vendor.
They carry.
So, so they're not really part of the event.
Yeah, they're not part, they're not part of the event and they have their own liability. So if, if, well, you can chuckle all you want, it's just a pure fact. So they, they have a legal responsibility in order to make sure that they're not over-serving somebody or whatever. You know, you got the safe serve thing, I just seen your little certificate. Um, there's nothing that we can do to control that, but they are a business that's on Main Street that's being impacted for that, for that day out of the year. So should they not have their business during that day?
And it's, so like our understanding, usually do like craft beer, right?
You might want.
Yeah, so we weren't going to do any craft beer because we knew that you typically do that. So we were just going to do.
Rebecca?
Let's shipyard in Oktoberfest.
So it's a public hearing.
This way? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sent through the chair, no disrespect.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The gentleman in the plaid shirt. So.
Yeah, John Bernard, also on the Oktoberfest committee, and I'll say it's disappointing that we're having this exchange now in a public hearing at this length, it's maybe we could have had these conversations earlier to work through the Oktoberfest committee. We, you know, we work really hard to work with local businesses to help everyone be successful and we've been extremely flexible over the years, really trying to help, help businesses be successful. Grill on Main included, you know, for a number of years we've reached out, year after year, I've gone down directly and spoken to them to ask them to get involved with the event. And to that point, finding out that there's going to be entertainment at their event, what I'm hearing is it sounds like there's a concurrent event happening on October 7th, concurrent with Oktoberfest. We run entertainment, multiple stages, nine to four, all day. So if they're saying they're, they have a guitar player, but it's not going to be playing while we have music playing, we have multiple stages, multiple music happening all day happening during our event. I'll also add too that our event has increasingly become expensive and difficult to put on. As it's grown with parking and the number of police and the details and the highway department, the folks who are involved in this event, it's become increasingly expensive. And we have very few limited avenues of revenue this year. And our beer garden is one of those. And to have a competitor at our event really puts our event at jeopardy to being able to have the funds to put on an event for next year. So you say that there's nothing you can do, but I respectfully disagree. And the thing that you can do is to vote no, to not grant them a one-day license.
Well, understood that. And I mean, this is a, you have to keep in mind and bear it out where the board sits, is we have a one-day event, everybody in town likes Oktoberfest, everybody tries to participate and enjoys it. And it's a one-day event. And I have a business that's here 365 days a year. That we also have the same kind of a commitment of how can I make sure I'm not impacting them in a negative way as well? So the difference between the Oktoberfest is they raise money, they do some nice charity things, they offer scholarships and things like that. They're part of our commercial tax revenue base. So each things have to be weighed out separately, but equal. I mean, they both hold equal weight. I don't, Oktoberfest is a large enough event with a large enough track record and a big enough history that I don't see that if one of our restaurants down in the lower part of their parking lot chooses to have a beer tent or an alcohol tent, serving some chili and a guitarist, I don't see that taking away from the event itself.
Maybe that they could do it on 364 other days of the year.
And Oktoberfest could do the same thing. I mean, it's, I, you can't ask a fundraising or a charity event in town to do something or ask a business, if they choose to do it on the same day, they choose to do it on the same day. They're a business, it's their right to do that. At least that's how I feel about it. And just keep in mind, I'm one of five people.
My biggest concern with the, I think I kind of see what Tony's saying is a lot of it comes down to keeping control of the people, right? I think the Oktoberfest committee's built up this 30 years of trust that they've proven they can keep people from getting off on the street drunk. Can we trust the other business to do that? I don't know.
And that's a good point, Max. In all honesty, it's, it's a one-day event and they have done a fantastic job of regulating as to what's happening. The beer garden was new and there was a lot of controversy that came around putting a beer garden into it.
Yeah.
These folks are a public restaurant that's open all year round, that their business depends on them making sure that they're not sending people out of there hammered. So, because the state can come in and the repercussions are significantly greater than what would happen to an Oktoberfest for a one-day event if there's an incident. Am I incorrect of that?
You're correct.
Yep.
So they have the same certifications and qualifications from their bartenders that Tony is offering up under the Oktoberfest bartenders. So I feel that we have the same assurances coming from the business that we have from the, from the committee itself. At least that's my opinion again, being one of five. If that helps in any way, Max.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice Chair, do you have any words of wisdom?
Nope. Nope. The, the only thing that I see, I'm just trying to be fair to a local business because their, their business is being impacted by the day. So they're trying to come up with a creative way to try to offset their costs because it's an expensive proposition to try to run a business. They, they lose it, their revenue comes in, I would assume that most of your revenue comes in on the weekends.
Correct.
And to, you can't drive there, you, so you have to walk there to go there. So as I said, when, last time I spoke, I do have a problem with drinks to go. I don't, I don't agree with the state that they should be allowed, it's kind of skating the issue. But if it's in a controlled area.
We definitely are willing to keep it.
And I do agree that you're pushing a little bit with the, with the guitarist. And I keep thinking of the guy sitting on the stairway of Animal House with his little guitar playing.
Would we be able to do like, like, if we put like a little stereo with like light music, so like the people that are in that particular area, so it's not going to the street if we didn't have that guy come and play?
He doesn't even have like a speaker or anything, it's.
He's just a.
It's just like an acoustic, yeah. It's just somebody that's just going to be sitting down there like while he's, like other people are sitting down there, just so there's some noise.
Gee, with your ukuleles, you can play the ukulele. You can get them at the library if you want. One moment.
One moment.
The.
My name is Mary St. Pierre, I'm also on the Oktoberfest committee.
Mary, one, one moment. He's trying to finish his thought, that's all.
I can't hear all that.
Understood.
That's all right, my thought's gone, so you can do whatever you want.
Do you have anything, Ross?
I'm going to kind of recuse from the discussion.
Okay.
Because I partake in the Oktoberfest, I'm the one who puts on the classic cocktail show.
Okay, no worries. Understood and thanks for bringing that up. Mary, please. For George.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. I have a hard time hearing what a lot of you are saying up there, that with this event, even last year when it rained, come 11 o'clock, you couldn't walk down Main Street. Because this is a well-known event, we have people from other states, other towns, we bring over 12,000 people to this event and every business that I talk with downtown are extremely ridiculously busy. So, and there is their driveway left open so that, you know, people can go in and they're a well-known restaurant, a sit-down, nice restaurant. So they are very busy during that day because we bring the people to you.
They are still open inside, so, so it really doesn't, you know, the only difference is, is that now, now they're, this would allow them to go outside and become part of the event, okay?
When we do cleanup, we see a lot of people going in, they're enjoying a wonderful dinner. So they are busy all day, just like everyone else in downtown is crazy busy during that day. And they have to plan ahead with the extra food and supplies, knowing that they're going to have a crazy busy day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more with Ross recusing himself? Any more thoughts or comments before I close?
The only reservation I have is about the entertainment, to be honest with you.
The entertainment?
I think that's pushing the envelope and you're becoming a competition. As far as them being able to have food in a controlled area or outside, which drinks, I don't have a problem with that because they, they have to do their safe serve anyways.
So.
But to be wandering around with drinks to go, it's a kind of a tough thing.
Yeah.
We're fine with getting rid of the entertainment. We weren't trying to compete or anything like that. We just thought it'd be a fun thing to do.
Yeah.
All right, so you're okay withdrawing the entertainment license?
Yeah.
Leaving the one-day alcohol license and accepting it stays on premises, you're not going to have people wandering around with it?
You won't, no drinks to go?
No drinks to go.
I know it's not what you want, Tony, but I think it's a fair compromise. I don't see how it's, how it's going to impact the Oktoberfest.
Any other comments?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Posma? Aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye. And you're allowed to recuse yourself if you'd like. All right. So what's sitting in front of us now is my understanding, so I can stay honest, is you guys are willing to withdraw the entertainment license?
Yes.
And you're asking to do a one-day liquor license and under the proviso, there will be no carryout alcohol?
Yeah.
No drinks to go.
No drinks to go.
Yes.
So that's what's in front of us.
Yep.
Anybody care to make a motion on that?
Uh, yeah, I'll motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Grill on Main on October 7th, 2023, with the added provision that they don't serve drinks to go.
And no entertainment license.
And no entertainment license.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
And one recused.
So how's that work, Mr. Administrator with the, it's only the, the attending voting majority, not the majority of the board?
So that would make it passed, correct?
Yep.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've done item number three. We have our friends from the school department here. I see one friend from the school, oh, there's the other one. Hi Courtney.
Hi.
Here to talk to us about your FY25.
Budget.
Budget concerns.
So, good evening and thank you for having us here for those watching at home or this afternoon members, I'm Paul VR, I'm the proud superintendent of the Douglas Public Schools that I'm here with.
Courtney Keegan, Business and Operations Manager.
And I know we're only three weeks into the start of the school year and we're still a long ways away from finalizing, presenting our FY25 budget. But I wanted to do here today before the board of selection, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak, is just give you some highlights of some things we're going to be trying to add to our budget so everyone's well aware of what our concerns are, what our needs are. Going into the FY25 year, we'll be going to the finance committee next week too and also making them aware of it. So just some high-level things. First thing on the agenda that we're looking for is we've been trying to add four new positions to the school department for the past few years and we've had to make those cuts. Those four positions are, one, a guidance counselor or, and/or adjustment counselor at the middle school. We currently have one adjustment counselor at the middle school for 294 kids. By comparison, our high school has 300 students and they have two counselors and one adjustment counselor. So we'd love the opportunity to be able to add an additional adjustment counselor at our middle school. That would do a couple of things, would allow us to deal with a lot of the social, emotional needs of our students. The other thing we'd look to do is start in the sixth grade in creating a seven-year path for students, starting in the sixth grade, going all the way through 12th grade as an opportunity to try to obtain and retain students from applying to other schools. The second position is a Stars and Stripes teacher at our high school. That is for one of our special education programs. We currently have one teacher. We'd be looking to add a second teacher for our students ages 18 to 22. That would allow us the opportunity to keep more students in district and not have to send them out of district. Third position is a STEM teacher for our primary and elementary school. Be a special area teacher along the lines of art, music. STEM for those watching at home who may not know stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. So it'd be a tech ed position and again, a great opportunity for our kids to be exposed to that. It would feed into our project lead the way in our middle and high school and also allow for kids to get excited about engineering and stay in district. And our final position, which we've tried for, is a grounds maintenance and custody position. We currently have 9.5 FTEs for almost 35,000 square feet and we just struggle to maintain the buildings clean. In addition to that, we have a .5 custodian for the outdoors. That person works four hours a day outside, four hours a day inside. We have almost 40 acres of land, so four hours a day. We heard Adam talk about how difficult it is to keep up, we're having the same struggles. Next is technology. We were very fortunate with the SFR funds with COVID to be able to purchase iPads and Chromebooks for grades K, pre-K through eight. At the end of this year, those Chromebooks are all four years old. For any of us who have a Chromebook at home, we know four years is a long time. To have them in the hands of a 10-year-old for four years is a real long time. We don't have a funding mechanism at this time to fund additional Chromebooks going forward. Those are critically important. We take our MCAS tests on them, teachers are using Google Classroom with them, we use them for all of our benchmark assessments. A lot of the new programs in ELA, math, and science all have an online feature and we need the Chromebooks for students to be able to access them both in school and at home. So we'll be looking for a mechanism to fund that. Next is, as referenced on the March 28th, 2023 board of selection meeting, the maintenance of our buildings is a paramount of ours. We know how critically important it is to have our buildings maintained and we're just one department in the town. One thing Ms. Keegan and I have talked about and one thing I'd love to see is a town-wide facilities audit, not just in the school department buildings, but of all buildings in the town and be able to create and start doing some short-term and long-term planning for what can we do to continue to upkeep our buildings. Our high school, the new high school is almost 20 years old and the primary school is almost double that. So having a plan in place would be tremendously important. Next is with part of our SFR funds, we were able to put in place, one of the requirements was to put remediation plans in place. How are we going to mitigate the gaps that were created by COVID? And we've done that by hiring paraprofessionals and putting some tier two interventions in place. The end of this year, that SRF funds, those SRF funds dry up, so we'd be looking to replace those to be able to have those tier two interventions for more students. This year, we're going into contract negotiations for three of our bargaining units, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, and our paraprofessionals and ABAs. So we have three contract negotiations this year and next year, we start our contract negotiations with our teachers' union. So three this year and one next year. And finally, on the docket is, just like we're seeing across all municipalities, Douglas isn't any different, the importance of maintaining and retaining non-union personnel and looking at their contracts and finding ways to keep them. This is a long list. I'll be back a few more times between now and the end of the year, but I just wanted our concerns and our needs made public. So as we're going through the budget process, and I know one thing we're going to try to do is by December 31st, have our preliminary budget available. This'll all be included. I didn't want it to come to a surprise, what our needs were. And I want to be able to have honest and open conversations with people as to why we need these things, what they are, and be able to hopefully get some support to have them added to our budget.
Well, I'm glad that you brought it to us sooner rather than later. So, because nobody likes surprises.
No one likes surprises.
Yeah.
And I know it's early, but I just wanted to put it out there, what our needs are. And I'll be more than happy to entertain questions about those needs if people have them.
So, not trying to solve problems like out of the jump, but I work in the technologies field, so I can help but ask. Like on the Chromebook side, have you guys looked into leasing?
We did. We have, we did it last year and we looked at the lease cost per year would be approximately $75,000.
All right, and that's annually for a one-year lease on them and then?
It would be, it would be, it would be a three-year lease for the Chromebooks at $75,000 a year.
Okay. And does that include under the leasing agreement, like maintenance and upgrades?
I don't have that in front of me. I just asked, when I, when I met with John Calabresi, our tech director, I said, John, I need an idea in case I'm asked.
Yeah.
Just to have, what is it going to cost? And he reached out, it was about $75,000.
Okay.
Purchasing versus leasing.
That's leasing.
Yeah.
All right. And the way you guys are looking into it, are you looking at purchase or lease?
Lease.
Lease.
Yeah, that's, kind of went more in that direction.
See, that's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
That's a horrible asset to try and hold on to and.
Correct.
Right. And then you turn them in. And we've been actually doing that with the high school for a number of years and it's worked out very well.
Yeah, usually does.
Yeah, that we've been doing that with the high school all along, you know?
It's, we didn't, we had, we had Chromebooks at the primary and the elementary and the middle school before, but with the SRF funds, we bought them for everyone and it was a one-time funding. We couldn't lease them, so we bought them for everyone going into the start of COVID and now at the end of this year, they'll be four years old.
Close to brick status.
Which is why we're having the discussion now.
Fair enough. That was all I had for questions on it. But I mean, I appreciate getting some food for thought. Anything?
Lot to take in real fast. Is there a chance to get a copy of that list now that it's public?
Sure, we'd be more than happy to send it over.
Yeah.
Notes, yeah. These are just my chicken scratch notes, but more than happy to put some formal.
Nope. Just not going to retain everything that you said in 45 seconds, so. Piece of paper with it all written down.
Is it right by forward that?
You'll follow it to Lisa.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Everything goes to Lisa.
The center of. We taught well, huh?
I can vouch for that.
Sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't.
I'd even want to have you to forward some notes over.
If we're not worthy to get it, she doesn't pass it along.
Or if she's fighting off the rats under her desk.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Anyone?
No?
I'd like to see the list.
Yeah.
With the Finance Committee, you doing the same type of presentation or is it going to be a little more meat on the bone?
Same exact presentation.
Okay.
Reader's Digest, a bridge version.
Reader's Digest, a bridge.
It's very preliminary. Like I said, we're talking about the following year budget.
Just curious, so that way I don't have to watch a meeting if I don't need to.
Correct. Yeah, it's, like we said, we're three weeks, although July 1 was the start of the fiscal year, we're three weeks into the start of the school year. And I just wanted to be able to put it out there. Again, a lot can change from, as we all know, when you start the school year, always start the fiscal year to when you end the fiscal year. A lot will change, but I just wanted these needs brought forth to the committee and the board.
One thing I did hear you say is you'll have a preliminary budget by the end of this calendar year?
The hope is to have the preliminary budget done by the end of.
But.
But with.
But, 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 I knew she was going to come up with it. But, 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 don't say that, Bob.
You do remember, you said we're going to be negotiating three contracts, so it's going to be very preliminary with all kinds of disclaimers at the bottom.
There will be disclaimers. If you look at the budget, three quarters of the sheet will be disclaimers, one quarter will actually be the budget because as, as I said, we are going into, we are going into negotiations with three different units.
As with this, the earlier you get information, you'll have better results.
Correct.
Getting it all at the last minute, it just.
It's always nice to know about the disclaimer.
Gets very confusing.
Go past the budget, look at the disclaimer.
Yeah, look at those first, yeah. Then go back up. Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or points of clarification?
I appreciate the time. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, have a good night.
Yeah.
All right. So we have the department updates and Adam already took care of his.
Yeah.
Thoroughly, so we have water and sewer.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan. You've got all kinds of good news for us now, right?
Yeah, everything's fine. He found a whole bunch of money.
He found a bunch of money?
In the shoebox.
It was him, Gene.
The golden whale.
And him.
And him.
What?
Maxwell's staying quiet.
Go ahead, Bob.
All right, so as you know, we had all kinds of projects going on. They finished up all the water main in northeast Maine this week, so now they're just doing all the ancillary tie-ins. Gilboa Street, all the main work and everything is done. They're just tying in the new manhole and the valve vault that will tie into the new pump station. So they're hoping by the end of this week, they'll be out of the road, which will be nice. I think the traffic lights worked out well. I think that was a good idea to push that forward as the project, so hopefully we'll be able to get more use out of those throughout the town, including hopefully the South Street project when they do the paving over there. Intent is to start paving. They're going to do some of the trench work, to repair the trench work in Lackey Dam Road next week and then the day after Columbus Day, they plan on starting the mill and overlay on Lackey Dam Road and Gilboa to the Mill parking lot. And the following week, we've got the first project that started, the CJP part. They're going to do their paving from North Street up to the meetup where they end at the Mill parking lot there. Hopefully they'll have the parts for the pump station before long to finish that so we can get everything switched over and kind of close this project out. The one remaining part of that, that we had to extend the contract for, just so we make sure the roads come out the way we want them, is the northeast main, so that'll remain unpaved or, you know, it'll just be a trench patch until spring, then they'll do the mill and overlay there unless we can work it in to get it a reclaim, so we do the whole road correctly again, so. That's kind of the overview of those big projects there. We're working on the design for the North Street project. That's kind of a big rebuild of that entire road and infrastructure and adding a storage tank at the top of North Street. We've had a couple of community outreach meetings to kind of discuss the intent there and get some input from the residents in that area. The Depot Street project, we haven't really started on yet. I've got the preliminary engineering documents. I gotta sit with Matt to get signed to start the engineering on this project, hopefully for construction next year. The Davis Street design, they're pretty close to finish with that. I don't see that we're moving too forward, too quickly moving forward with that project yet, but I think we have enough, enough going on at the moment, but.
On the depots, that's because it's under offer, you have to have that obligated by December 31st of '24.
Twenty-four, yeah.
And then paid out by '26.
Yeah, I'm hoping we have the project underway and being close to finish before the end of '24, so that would be my intent, to help to get the engineering done over the winter to go out to bid and construct the next year. That's the intent there. The engineering, I would say we're probably pretty close to 75% on the North Street, so again, we're, we'll find out in the middle of October whether or not we get the Masworks grant that we applied for. That'll be a big help in moving that project forward if that comes to fruition. Let's see, what are the projects? So I got a bunch of other little projects that you guys probably aren't aware of. Actually, you've signed some of the acceptance on the grants for the asset management on the wastewater side. We're probably 75% done with that. The asset management on the water side, we haven't started. They wanted to wait until we finish the asset management on the wastewater before they start that one. And then we have a lead service line replacement program, so we identify any lead services and anything in town. We don't, we don't have any lead services, but we do have lead goos next. So we'll identify those and prioritize. Luckily, a lot of these projects are taking care of all those because when we replace the mains, we eliminate any lead goos next and do new services to the curb stops.
That valve exercising equipment, is that still in the works? Or still an option?
That's held off until occupancy on the project that we're looking at that from. But yeah, that's still on the table.
Yep.
So it can't go anywhere.
Yep. Just asking, just curious. Every time I see one of his guys out there playing with their little.
Really, it's injury waiting to happen, that's why we pushed for that part of the development agreement. Development agreement was structured so that the developer would not be providing the town with all this expensive equipment until after they had achieved their CO.
Yep.
They didn't want our inspectors to be under pressure feeling like somebody had given them, the town, something so they needed to chip in.
No, it makes sense.
I just like to remind us every once in a while that it's still out there. I think last time I asked about the mini excavator, this time will be the valve exerciser.
None? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I think we'd be remiss not to acknowledge the extraordinary effort that Mr. Sullivan has made along with Bob Manerick and Stantec, Stantec's daily construction supervising engineer. It has been a bear and you have had to babysit on more than one occasion. Significant decisions have been made on the fly that defend the long-term interests of the town and would not have occurred with any less than the highest level of professionalism and attention, which is why we fought so hard to keep you here and will continue to fight so hard to keep you here because Bob's done a spectacular job and I think we should be grateful for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thanks, bud.
Appreciate your input.
Thanks.
And I'm sorry you got to work with the other Bobs.
There is a synergy that they're beginning to achieve for a certain harmonic frequency that irritates the daylights out of the finance director.
The tone of the Bobs.
Bob squid.
But they are not in the Bobs.
But is Bob two wearing off on Bob one?
Well, who's one, who's two?
That's right.
Well, I didn't say who was one and who was two. I just wanted to know what the answer was.
All right, so we have an amendment of the, yes?
Can we go to the fire department just so we don't keep them here all night?
No.
They're here for executive session.
Oh, okay. Never mind, you guys get to stay.
Please ignore the vice chairman.
You're doing very well.
We are, we're moving along. If you wouldn't interrupt me with stuff.
Well, Bob's coming up, so the sooner you get him here, the sooner he'll be finished.
I'm just kidding, Bob. Sit down. It's all right. No, go back over there. We have an amendment of the donation from CRG approved at the 8/29 meeting and possible votes, so.
Mr. Chairman, all you're doing is amending the number, accepting a larger.
They doubled it?
Transfer. It's 200,000.
Added 50,000.
I like my idea better.
Well, I do too, but unfortunately, they sent the check. As Town Minister said, you're just amending the amount. One thing I'd like to mention is the development agreement that we talked about for the equipment. If we don't use all of this 200,000, the remainder will be transferred over to the equipment portion of that development agreement. It's different from Scannell. Scannell, we will use their 250,000. We might not use all of this 200,000. We won't know until the project is done. So that's the only difference between the two.
Cool. I would entertain a motion to approve the amended amount of $200,000 of road payment for the purpose of road resurfacing on North Street.
From CRG?
From CRG.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
Did we just set a record with Bob?
Quite possible, but don't test your luck. There's more here.
Yep, there's eight review and discussion of the North Street Gilboa Street signage by Vanas and Associates, Inc., and possible votes. Assuming that's you, Bob.
Vanas, there's going to be a lot of improvements to the North Street Gilboa intersection. Vanas is working with CRG and then V, I gotta get these straight, VHP is working with Scannell. The funding is coming from the Scannell portion. You have two pictures in front of you. Both of these are from Scannell's VHP, no, VHB, Bravo. Look at the one that's colored in the upper right-hand corner, September 19th. That's a drawing I just received at 3:30 this afternoon.
That's a lot of signage, Bob.
Bob, can we get a sign ahead of this to say there's signs ahead?
There's, they're replacing, we're replacing signs. We're replacing signs. The three stop signs will be removed and replaced with these three LED flashing signs, solar powered. Underneath it, right now, your stop sign says three-way stop. That will be removed and replaced with these three yellow signs. Traffic does not stop from the left, right, or oncoming, depending on which direction you're coming from. And the four set of signs for the crosswalk, you have those on Main Street right now. We have two crosswalks on North and Gilboa that are totally unmarked. So we're just bringing this intersection up to standards like the rest of the town.
Word for me. I don't see a warning, Bob Manerick, a head sign or Bob maybe lurking in your shrubbery sign.
Well, that's because the, the electronic sign's being used for the Oktoberfest currently, so we can't put that up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
Sometimes we do things we don't like because of our obligation to provide the public with the highest level of safety regulation. We have to follow the recommendations of professionals, in this case, a traffic engineer who's suggesting this layout of signs. But I'm going to make a bold prediction because personally, as a matter of personal opinion, I despise these blinky stop signs and I'm guessing that the same people who wiped out all of the signs that we stuck in the middle of Main Street to protect pedestrians will probably take out these signs, I'll give them about a month. Because they're really irritating. But wasn't my idea.
Is this the same company that did the North Street Davis Street intersection?
Yeah, well, yes or no? The same company did their, some of the recommendations for this, the striping, not the signage.
Yep. Not the stop sign at the top.
Not the.
Do we have to take the blinky stop sign or can we just do an old school stop?
This was, this came out of the Safety Committee.
Follow the safety recommendations and let the chips fall where they will.
If we get complaints from the neighbors on the blinking signs, we'll put back.
If we have to put a remote parking spot down there for an angle.
All I can say is this, is that there was a, there's a member on our board who's not here this evening, who was very adamant about blinky pedestrian signs and they were very, very short-lived by the residents. There was a contract put out on them, hits took place.
We've got one in Westport that's been replaced five times in three months.
I think, John, when you were doing the highway, were they, were they not a target? So people took those things out as fast as they could.
So the good news is we only have to live with them for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
But.
We tried. They can be replaced.
Right?
We're keeping the old signs.
All right.
And we can put these elsewhere.
We're trying.
Southwest Main Street, good place for those.
Not Churchill Road.
That's a cute a stop sign, we're trying.
That's what I'm going to say, not at Churchill, but anywhere else that's fine.
See the street.
The striping will be as depicted on this drawing. Again, we've got this drawing at 3:30 this afternoon.
Okay.
That's for the intersection.
Do we have that one, or is that?
No.
We have it, but you don't, Matt.
You do, you do now.
Striping we can live with.
Entire road will be striped. Scannell is paying for the striping in the intersection from 100 to 130 feet, depending on which approach.
Can you quickly tell me who's on the Safety Committee?
Mr. Wojcik, John Furno, Adam Furno, Ken Frazier, Matt Benoit.
Police of, police of chief, chief of police as well.
Police chief.
Police chef.
Cheffin.
Do we have to take any action on this, or is this information?
The other highway question is, it's your road.
I would make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Safety Committee.
For both the signage and the speed limit?
Not the.
Not the speed limit.
Just the signage.
You're not going to get that out of me on a bet.
I'm trying.
I'm not trying to tip my hand or anything, but.
Signage and striping.
Signage and striping. All right. The motion has been made and seconded, and they caught me on my fast one. I'm trying to get stuff through there quick.
Yeah, well, good luck.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nobody's opposed. Excellent. All right, so we are going to review and discussion of the advisory 30 mile-per-hour speed limit on Gilboa Street for new CRG bridge and possible votes.
Before we get too far into it, did this go through DOT?
This is a DOT approved plan.
So it went to DOT and they approved it?
It did not go through, I don't know if it went through Mast dot, it's done by a civil engineer.
No, so then it didn't go through, it's got to go through Mast dot, right? Mast DOT for a speed limit change?
It's not a speed, it is not.
I think he's talking just a yellow sign, not an advisory, not a term.
It is not a speed limit change. It's an advisory.
Yeah, yellow background.
It's so unusual, it's almost impossible to get your head wrapped around, but we're going to put a sign that says, we think you should go slower than the speed limit.
But we're not going to enforce it. We have no enforcement capability.
You can't, it's advisory.
It's kind of like a stop sign in a parking lot.
It's like on Webster Street, you have a 45 mile an hour speed limit. In the curves, there's a yellow sign that says 35. It's advisory.
Let me get this, this straight, is we're going to put a sign up that basically says, we think you should do less than 30.
No, you can do it in the maximum of 30. You're not going to go 35, you're going to go 30 over it.
We think you should.
Because that area is 35 currently, isn't it?
40, I believe.
But we think you should do 30.
I think it's a dangerous path to go down because we just recently had the same exact conversation about changing the speed limit on Route 16, so why wouldn't we put an advisory sign up there?
You already have advisory signs on Route 16. On Webster Street.
Go into the curves, there's the yellow ones that say 35.
They're already there.
But they think we should do 35, we don't have to.
You can do 45, it's controlling. White sign is controlling, yellow sign is advisory. The reason they're putting this yellow sign there is you're merging with truck traffic coming off the new bridge.
So the sign should say merging traffic.
That sign is there.
Then they don't need another one.
No?
What's the song, signs, signs everywhere, signs? People are going to go blind driving through Douglas.
What, it's like it's putting an advisory, we think you shouldn't have a heart attack in Douglas. How do you guys feel about it? Would that help with like staffing at the Fire Department? We think you shouldn't have heart attacks in Douglas.
Or at least not after 7:00 or before 7:00 a.m.
Yeah. Key heart attack hours in Douglas are recommended between. Sorry, I had to.
All right, you can do it. If we're going to put up a speed limit sign, I'd rather reflect what the actual speed limit is, not what we think it should be.
And that's 40.
Huh?
And that's 40. That sign is posted prior to this intersection.
Okay.
So it's 40, but this is an advisory.
You can advise whatever you want, I'm only 25, 20%, remember? 105, so.
On that post will be a sign, trucks entering highway, below it will be 30 mile-per-hour in yellow.
This really does make my head hurt.
After looking at this thing, it just looks like we have an obsession with signs.
No, it just makes my head hurt a little bit.
Okay.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this, or do we all have a headache and want to pass?
Can I suggest just a reduced speed? He's going to, trucks entering, reduce speed.
So now you want to suggest, not an advisory?
Now you're talking DOT, which is a lengthy process.
Even if it said just reduce speed.
And be careful what you wish for, the DOT could come back and say, we think you could, you could do 50.
That's right, 85% rule. We just went through this a month ago.
So either that or just don't do it.
I think that's kind of where I'm at. Like, if it's not enforceable by the Police Department at all, like, it's an advisory saying, we think you should do this, but it has no teeth, and if somebody decides like, yeah, you think I should be doing 30, but I'm going to do 40 because I can, it's just kind of a sign there to give somebody a job to make a sign.
Most people will slow down to 35.
Well, now that I know it's.
Follow them down Webster Street, they're doing 35 in the.
Our town accountant will slow down for that if you put it up.
Thank you.
If you already bought the sign, just tap it to the front of her car and she'll see it everywhere.
You didn't even go that way.
Now that there's an advisory, she will, just so she can follow it. Sorry, Mike.
Well, no, you can do whatever you want, man.
I didn't design this, I'm just bringing it forward to you.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this at all, or? Because my, I'm kind of with Mike, I'm not inclined to approve any such thing, but.
Yeah, it seems like an unnecessary sign.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary.
All right, so.
Unnecessary, might not.
If we just take no action, then that's that, or do you want us to say, we say no?
He wants a vote.
We're going to do the old-fashioned Roberts rules. This is how you do it. The motion is stated in the form of a positive action.
Just like I did.
To a positive sign scheme, and then you vote no if you don't like the sign scheme, and it's defeated, and we move on to the next agenda item.
I make a motion to approve the advisory 30 mile an hour speed limit sign on Gilboa Street for the new CRG bridge. That's it.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or snarky comments? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
It has been defeated. It's gone.
I will advise the Civil Engineer to remove that sign.
That's an advisory.
To remove it? It's not already up, is it?
Can't even.
No.
All right, so we have the grant acceptance for the Police Department FY '24 911 support and incentive grant and possible votes, and the grant is in the amount of $34,684, and all expenditures will be approved by the Police Chief.
I heard that. And that was not true.
So you need a motion to accept the grant?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept the grant for the FY '24 911 support and incentive grant of $34,684.
Second, Doc.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we are to open the warrant for the November 6, 2023 special town meeting and possible votes.
Make a motion to open the warrant.
Second.
For the November 6.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Meeting minutes, possible votes. And in our packet, we have August 1st, August 15th, and August 29th for open session, the 31st for executive session, and June 6th for executive session. And one more thing, Attorney Bowen reviewed and approved release of both executive session minutes.
What about any regular session minutes?
Regular session minutes don't require his approval.
I know they don't require them, I'm just curious if he had reviewed them.
I don't think we send regular session after.
Oh, no, I thought you said, Tim, I'm sorry. So Rich, okay.
Bowen, not Bowen.
I had a traumatic brain injury.
Are we back on that? I thought it healed.
Yeah, well, I have flashbacks.
Somebody needs to play like the Jeopardy music or something.
As long as you don't sing.
I may. Let the record reflect, the Finance Director obeys all advisory signs.
She has love.
I said the Finance Director obeys all advisory signs.
I do, correct.
All right. I just wanted to see if I could get her to come back in the room. I won. Winning.
You're just proving the point you were making.
Everybody make it through the August 1st minutes? Yeah? Make a motion to approve the August 1st 2023 minutes as written.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Has everybody had a chance on the 15th, August 15th minutes? Are you still going through them? You good?
Good.
You? Make a motion to approve the August 15th meeting minutes as presented or written.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Any further discussion on those? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. What about the 29th? Still going through them?
Yeah, I got to.
Yeah. Speed limit.
Hmm. An advisory or a limit? That wasn't that far. Everybody's good on the 29th?
Make a motion to approve the August 29, 2023 minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. And Rich is fine with releasing both, both of these? Yep.
I also amended what was discussed at the last executive session on the 5:31 minutes that we've been looking at for like three meetings now.
Those are recorded also? Are they recorded or are they just transferred into text, recordings?
No, I have to type them up from the recording.
But the recordings are erased?
Yes.
Okay.
That's only a little tiny recorder she's got.
Except for.
Me and Matt already jammed it up once when we were left alone with it.
I pressed all the buttons at once and then it did something. Some people reboot it, I just press all the buttons.
And she hasn't taken a day off since.
That's why Matt's not allowed to touch the recorder anyhow.
Everybody all set on the, on the May 31st meeting minutes? Executive? You good? Good on those? Make a motion to approve the May 32nd, 2023 executive meeting minutes.
The 31st, you mean?
Whatever it is. May 31st?
Yes.
What did I say?
The 32nd.
32nd.
They would never be released if you did that.
I told you, traumatic brain injury. Are there any paramedics in the room?
Can anybody tell me what day of the week the 32nd of May falls on?
Hey, just drop me a clock.
Shoot me first.
Drop me a clock, Joe.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think you would, I'm sorry, you'd have to conclude and release.
And release.
Right.
Yep. Do we have to revote it?
Amended motion.
Amended motion. To approve the May 31st, 2023 executive meeting minutes and release.
Made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Everybody good on the June 6th? Good on the June 6th? You don't read them. Make a motion to approve the June 6th, 2023 executive meeting minutes and release.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on those? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ratify town administrator contract and possible votes. And there's been no changes or amendments or anything else on the contract itself since signature, so we're all set.
All good to go. So would the motion go to ratify the contract or to accept?
You should take an open session vote.
I know that, but the motion, would it be to ratify it or to accept the?
Well, I think it matters how you word it, as long as you vote.
Make a motion to ratify, accept the town administrator's contract.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Dated 88-29-23.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in the spirit of the vote that was just taken, it's not unusual for the Select Board to vote in executive session. It's the business that is before it in order to bring it to a conclusion so that it can be, in the case of a contract, signed by all parties, and then have another vote in open session for the record. It's belts and suspenders, but it just, all of our contracts are posted on the website anyway, so if anyone wants to see what that is in that contract, it's already, I think it's already voted. So my thanks to the Select Board for moving expeditiously through the process. It is a good contract, it reflects give and take by all involved, but in the end, squares the best interest of the town with the interest of the employee, so thank you for your efforts. The town's going to experience a lot of paving work before the snow flies, and I just want to reiterate what I've said past couple of meetings because it bears repeating. Please be patient. The town is working, and I'm speaking to anyone who might listen to the meeting, not the Select Board. The town is trying to make sure that all of our funds are leveraged to the maximum efficiency. So we're doing all of the underground work first. We're doing, all of the service connections are being stubbed outside of the paved area so that when we finally do get a regrind done and the finish coat goes on, we won't be tearing these roads up. Nothing should upset a taxpayer more than having a brand-new roadway cut up by the gas company or the water department just a couple of years after, and at this point, it is so expensive to pave streets that it is a horrible misuse of taxpayer funds to have no plan and to just go forward because you're in a hurry. I realize people are impatient. I know people in Douglas are not used to red lights, so even the temporary lights that we put out there, we have the occasional scofflaw who thinks it's wise to run through them or get out of the car and yell at the light as if the inanimate object's going to respond to them, but it's not. It'll all be over soon. What we do now is for the safety of the public. We're putting in a significant sewer pump station at that location on Gilboa Street. If you've noticed, the excavator is about five times too big, but that's the one they've chosen to use. When this thing swings into the oncoming traffic, it takes up almost all the space that a car would use to pass. We are doing everything we do for your benefit and for your safety as the traveling public. Notwithstanding blinky stop signs, we'll try to do all the things that make sense for the town and make sure that the roadways are open. the town and make sure that the roadways are open and that they're not disturbed. I am concerned that, and I hope it's baseless, but I want to hedge my bets and manage expectations for everyone. North Street is a very old road from Gilboa to Maine. You had Hayward Landing, which was a significant mill complex, many, many, how can we put this? Compromises to good practice were made at the time that it was a mill, and we have pipes everywhere. Some of them are dead ended, some of them don't do anything anymore, but there's all kinds of structures under the ground. And every time we fix a water leak on North Main, we find another one of these things or a ledge outcropping that we didn't realize was there. Or we find that trenches were backfilled with enormous boulders. What's going to happen in North Street is we are actually going to take the street down, reset the granite curbs more or less where they are now, and repave, and we're going so deep with the regrind, with the pulverization, that the reveal on the granite curb will be back to standard. So the roadway's going to be down quite a bit from where it is now. So the practice for a long time was to just keep paving over and paving over and paving over. If you're observant, you notice the sidewalk is at the same level as the street now, and that's going to be rectified. But there's just so much junk in that street that once we start really working hard to pulverize and starting at, you know, working on the chimneys for the different manholes and catch basins, there may be some issues. So North Street, for the most part, is going to be closed when this work is done. People will have to go around. Closing the street makes it possible for the work crew to work much faster and much more efficiently. So it really is not the ideal solution, but it is a solution that's going to work for the town. South Street, again, we're trying to follow best practice. So we are going to install stormwater management where we already have stormwater management that has failed. So we are replacing like with like, but now we expect it to work the way it's supposed to. And we're going to restore the crown to South Street so the water is pushed off into our stormwater management system and not necessarily being dumped on anybody's yard or have it all channeled into the roadway ruts that have been created without a crown and all of the water rushing to just one piece of property. Having said that, we don't have a place to put it. We don't have town property and we're not channeling water to town property at the end of this, at the lowest end of the grade. So we're going to do what we are able to do, which is fix what we already have. And South Street has been on our list as a top 10 road that needed to be addressed, not only for the roadway conditions, but for the sheer volume of traffic that it carries. So hopefully, when we come into the holiday season or the end of the holiday season, you'll have a new South Street, a large portion of South Street, and a new Gilboa Street and North Street exchanged to Maine, and you'll feel a lot better about yourself. And the plow trucks will have far fewer things to hit as they make their way up those major thoroughfares. A word about the budget process, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I'm inviting everyone this year to follow along with this metaphor. You know, in the past, the budget was something you could pick up and really, with a couple of days' work and ask a few questions, understand what's going on because for the most part of the town has been following a level service budget, simply trying to identify enough revenues and capture those revenues in order to maintain the service levels that we've had. With the possibility of significant new growth from the warehouse construction project and follow-on projects in the future at Pine, my observation is we're moving back towards a process where department heads, including the school department, present us with aspirational budgets. On the record before, I've said I hate the aspirational budget process where everybody comes together with what they need because what you end up with is a bunch of disappointed department heads who walk around town saying that they got cut, when in fact, all we ever did was keep ourselves within the parameters of the budget. So the metaphor is like diving into a pool of water or making your way into a pool of water. Before you could survive dipping your toe in, seeing if you like the temperature, and go out to your knees, and you found it refreshing enough and you could understand the budget, you were fine. With dynamic revenue growth as well as significant cost pressure, now we need everyone on the select board and the finance committee to jump in completely. You need to understand where your handholds are, how deep the water is, whether or not you're comfortable with the temperature, because the effort that it will take this year to plan for a budget with a five-year time horizon and allocate new revenues, such as they are, in a sustainable fashion is going to be a significant challenge. There is a huge room for consensus. I don't really think you're going to find yourself in a zero-sum game, but what you're not going to be able to do is think that a million dollars in new growth is going to last you that long. Because even with the budget forecast model that I'm using now, by year four, which would be fiscal '27, I start that year with a negative $685,000 bottom line. So if I had a million dollars today, where will it be four years from now? This is why we don't do TIFs. This is why we don't do a lot of things that spend money or sacrifice revenues because the town of Douglas is not constituted this way. We're not a race car. We're basically a Toyota hybrid Corolla.
With duct tape.
That will always get you to work. We make excellent use of our resources. We're extremely efficient, but we're just not made to drive through a field full of rocks. And to the extent that rocks are being thrown our way, we need to be mindful that we have to hit those milestones, particularly if we're going to go out to bond for a highway building and any associated work with it. We would go to a bond ratings call, and our hope would be in this really high interest rate environment to have bond rating improvements so that the cost of borrowing for the town would be less. And that is first and foremost, one of the most significant things we have to realize is carefully managing our reserves so that we hit certain scorecard targets before we get through the bonds rating process is a necessary thing to do. We also have to be mindful of the ongoing aging of the infrastructure of some of our buildings. May not be highlighted by some, but it's front and foremost for us. So to the extent that we need to replace, for instance, 22-year-old transformers on our school campus, whether we want to or not, to the tune of whatever that's going to be, close to $300,000 or even closer to $400,000, we have to take care of those things. You can't run a school system without electricity. So now that these things are past their useful life and past any guarantee from grid that they'll fix them for us, we need to step up and realize that our resources will become scarce as we pick off the high priority items. Oktoberfest, I just want to provide the board with reassurances. We are engaging in a substantial amount of planning on the public safety side of the equation. And I want to thank the chiefs, Assistant Chief Manning, Chief Furno, Chief Miglianico, Lieutenant Gould, and everyone who's been involved in coming up with an increasingly robust plan. I think it may still have some way to go, but we view Oktoberfest as an opportunity to practice a lot of really key emergency management skills as well as to plan for the characteristics of the event itself. We don't disclose this in public for reasons that should be obvious, but I can tell you that each and every year, there's been a greater investment in planning and thoughtfulness about everything from communications to security to traffic planning, as well as compliance with structures that, the temporary structures that get erected up and down Main Street. So this year, we think we're in a good spot. We've done some tabletop exercises around it, and it's been very, very helpful. I think everybody's felt, feeling helped. The last thing I want to emphasize at this point, actually two things. One is unfortunately, an elected town official has begun to coin a phrase which is not accurate. The select board has voted, and I sit in the spirit of the conversation that we just had about the town administrator contract, you have also voted in executive session under an exemption to the, well, not really an exemption, to one of the allowable purposes for executive sessions to discuss an interest in real property. And you have been following a discussion around strategic purposes behind potential exercise of the town's rights under Chapter 61. We have served notice to a party that the town of Douglas has performed appraisals on properties we believe are subject to an intent to convert them from Chapter 61 to a residential purpose. There's nothing secret about that. That is a vote that is open. In fact, those executive session minutes to this, up to this point, were held, can now be released if anybody's concerned about it. But what's important for everyone to know is the select board does not purchase interest in real property. Town meeting does. The select board's duty is to preserve the options of town meeting so that town meeting will have the full range of decisions to be made about what they want to purchase, what taxpayers don't want to purchase for the long-term interest of the town. But to have those rights expire before town meeting even has a chance to consider them would be dereliction of duty, and you can't do that. So in this particular case, the town has acted to preserve the rights of the town to a date that is past special town meeting in the fall, beyond it. So special town meeting will have the opportunity to consider what you've been thinking about. The last thing I just want to end on a light note, but I think it's kind of important. Wiry, wispy, not-so-young gentleman came into the office, and sometimes you wonder, was he going to complain about stormwater? Is he going to complain about, you know, what's he talking about? And the French-Canadian side of my family would refer to this guy as the bonhomme, right? Just a really nice old man who set about to do a simple thing. In the 1950s, President Truman, to support a savings bond drive, had replicas of Liberty Bell cast in France and issued to the 50 states. And it was all obviously part of raising money for the war effort and retiring war debts, and a lot of people got heavily involved. And Liberty Bell, obviously, is an emotional touch point for most Americans in touch with their history. And Commonwealth of Massachusetts had squirreled away its Liberty Bell replica to where nobody could see it anymore. So this gentleman, Mr. George Warren of Whitemanville, Mass., went on a one-man campaign to get Massachusetts replica of Liberty Bell put back in a proper place of honor in the State House. And he went around to many, many cities and towns, and only five or six of them actually gave him a letter of support. One of them was the town of Douglas. In April of 2016, under Mr. Kozinski's signature on behalf of the board that was sitting in 2016, supported to the executive office of administration of finance at the State House, the restoration of the bell to public access. While on September, I'm going to find the exact date here, September 9, 2023, the bell was moved back into the foyer of the Massachusetts State House. There's a very nice picture of Mr. Warren standing next to it, but he thought of it. And he came back to the Douglas Select Board's office to thank the town of Douglas for being one of his supporters. And it's nice to see that we all think of government as large and impersonal and never respond to anybody about anything, and complaints go into a dead end, and sometimes that's true. But in this particular case, the gentleman set out with some persistence to do a simple thing, and he was able to win the day with the support of the town. So it's nice for Mr. Warren to have happen. With that, Mr. Chairman, it's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. And I remember him.
You do? Bow tie.
All right. So do we have any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting? Seeing as we do not, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of potential litigation and then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
So move.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote?
Postma, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morris, aye.
Smith, aye.